Hello. How's everybody tonight?
Good teacher, how you doing?
I'm doing good. Hey, good to hear from you.
Doing well, doing well. Good to hear everybody. Hello.
Well.
Hello, everybody.
Hello. Oh, Miss Rosa, how you doing?
I'm doing fine, Sister Mona. How are you?
I'm good. It's so good to hear your voice.
Well, thank you, and good to hear yours. How's y'all be doing?
He's doing great.
Good, good.
I missed you.
Oh, thank you, and most definitely you.
Okay, well, um, we'll go ahead and get started. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord. Uh, we thank you that you allow us to come together to study your word. We thank you, Heavenly Father, that you washed over us and you took care of us. You blessed us, Heavenly Father, and you blessed us with a mind that wanna seek you, and we wanna thank you. We pray blessings upon those on this call, Lord. May Heavenly Father bless those that are planning to get on or those who listen by you too. We thank him, we praise you. Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, all right, so, um, we're on, um, Proverbs, uh, chapter eighteen. I think on last week, we, um, well, last week, we, um, covered, um, six through eleven. And, um, kind of got some insight from that, um, you know, and, you know, again, as Proverbs is, um, it's just kind of, is, 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 first of all, it's basically sayings or statements that, um, uh, King Solomon or, you know, um, that, that was being said based upon observations. And, um, not, and for the most part, most of them are, there's a positive, if we will, and a negative. You know, if this happened, or if you do this, and then this. But, um, with that, it gives us a, uh, uh, practical use of Proverbs, uh, that we can put it to use in our daily living. Um, and so, that's the good thing about Proverbs, um, because it's basically directions and instructions on living. If you wanna, if, if, if you wanna live this way, or if you wanna receive this, or if you wanna be this way, then this is what you need to do. Um, so, as we prepare to get started in chapter eighteen, verse twelve tonight, we're gonna give the opportunity, anybody got something they wanna share, um, um, about our studies or any questions, you can do so at this time. Okay. All right, so, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go ahead and get started, um, in our lesson on tonight. And we're gonna start at, we're at chapter eighteen, we'll start at verse twelve. Um, okay, so verse twelve says, "Before a downfall, the heart is halting, but humility comes before honor." Okay? So, you know, this is, um, a verse that we talk about a lot, you know, and it's dealing with pride. Um, and basically, uh, pride or haltiness, you know, we thinking that we're better than everybody, or we all this and all that. You know, it's letting us know that, um, you just before downfall. Um, and, um, but it also said, "But humility comes before honor." So, in other words, i- i- I see this teaching that if you want, you know, if you want honor, if you, um, you wanna, it's best to be hu- uh, humble, best to have some humility about you, and be humble. Um, because it's, i- i- and this is, I'm seeing that this is teaching us that humbleness is gonna take us a long way versus pride and haltiness. Um, you know, basically pride, haltiness, basically the same thing, haltiness, you, basically you're looking down on people. You know, pride that you're looking up on yourself, lifting yourself up above everybody.
Amen.
And those are the, and if there's, I think we covered a proverb already when we talked about some of the things God hates. And I believe haltiness was, you know, was that main one. Okay? So, we have to understand and remember that God is not looking for us to try to have ourselves above other people, thinking that we're better than other people, thinking that, you know, um, because what happens is, when we do that, we're trying to take his spot.
Amen.
Okay.
That's what Satan did.
That's right. That's right.
He was so prideful and lifted up, and we can't have that, that, you know, kinda attitude. We have to be humble, you know, because God give more grace to the humble. He hate that pride love. You know, and sometime if you examine your, you examine yourself, you know whether you walking in pride or not. You know, you know that spirit. And that's not a good spirit when you walk in pride, because that is not the characteristics of the Holy Spirit. So, we have to walk in humbleness. We got to be humble before God and humble to one another. You know, we can't think that we know everything and, you know, and our family is the best family. We got the better car, we got the better house, all of that's pride. And sometime we have to search within ourselves. You know, is that, is that spirit on me? It's a spirit. You know, and we have to look deep inside of us and say, is that spirit on me? We can't have that spirit on us, 'cause God hate a pride love. He hate that. So, we got to walk in humbleness, we got to be humble. You know, we got to love one another, and we got to really uplift one another more than we do ourselves.
Right.
You know?
That's right.
So, we just, we, we just got to walk the way that the word have us to walk. Sometime it's real, it's, it's difficult doing these things, 'cause you know, we live in the flesh.
That's right.
Sometime the flesh wanna be in control. So, we have to, we have to discipline ourselves to walk in the spirit. God don't want me acting like this and doing th- these kinda things to my brother, my sister. You know, we have to love one another, 'cause love is the greatest gift there is. And we got to love without, um, strings attached.
That's right.
Our love have to be pure. We have to have that pure love. Don't say you love somebody, and when they need you, you not even there. Come on now.
That's right.
That's not love. You know, so we have to really check ourselves and see if we really live in a way to ac- according to the word of God. 'Cause we have to change. We have to change our mindset. We got to be transformed by the word. You know, and just not saying, "Well, I love you," and then you mad. One day you glad, and the next day you mad. Come on now, we got to do better than that, because we are his representatives and his ambassadors, and the world is watching us. We are the church. We are the church, and Jesus Christ is the originator of the church, and we represent him, and we must represent him well. We can't be saying, "Well, you know, I'm saved, sanctified, and got, you got unsaved people coming back talking about you." "Oh, they ain't saved," and that happened, that happened, uh, that happened on yesterday. That happened on yesterday, but I was talking to my sister-in-law, and, um, and she was telling something, "Yeah, your sister, she was doing all of this, like she all of this," and then got hatred in her heart. You know, people know who you are now. You can't fool the world, 'cause they know how you supposed to act. They'll tell you how you supposed to be acting, okay? So, that's why we have to walk in the spirit. Amen. We got to do it, and we only can do it through the Holy Spirit. That's why it's so, it's so crucial that we be born again, and not just going through a routine, and not just in church. You know what is church all about? We are the church. You just go to the building to worship. That's the worship place. You know, so we are the church. So, we just got to get it together. And God help us. He'll help us. We cry out to him, he'll help us.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank, thank you for that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else wanna add something?
Well, I'd just like to add, I appreciate that, um, uh, to evangelists, Mona, appreciate that. That's very good. The other little, uh, other little piece I'd like to add is that we're not really ready to receive or to learn or to be added upon until we humble enough to understand that we're not enough by ourselves.
Amen.
And, and that takes humility to know that we're not enough, or actually that we're nothing. That's what Paul would say, and then to realize that sometimes we, folks are jumping off and boasting what they are in the Lord. And you look at, um, Paul, who was one of the apostles, and what he would say about himself.
Wow.
And then also that, you know, that he, when he, he had all the education, all the authority, you know, to, to be where he was from, and, you know, then he had to get knocked down off of high horse, really, literally, and spiritually. He had to be, um, you know, blinded and had to be under the tutelage of someone else, had to tutor him, as he would, he had to be blinded, um, to, so, you know, when you, you know, when you, I don't know if anybody ever got anything in, in your eye. It's hard to be proud if you got something in your eye.
Amen.
I got a piece of metal in my eye one time and stuff like that. And all I wanted is, Lord, please, just give me relief. Just whatever you do, I wasn't thinking about a thing, except for give me some relief. Whatever you need me to do for that relief, wherever I need to go, whatever I need to get, I need to be relieved from this blindness.
Oh, my God.
And so, that's a little piece, just a little piece with a little scrap metal in my eye. And, uh, and, y- y- you know, think about Paul being in charge, so in charge, he thought that Stephen should die.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that he thought all of Stephen's friends should die. He was going to find some more people.
Okay.
And that kind of arrogance. And then, and Jesus ask him, "Why are you messing with my stuff?" He, "Why do you kick against the prick?" Is that, is that scripture?
Yes.
Amen.
Wh- why are you actually kicking against the, the very thing you're supposed to be building? And he had to be blinded for a time and, and tutored too, and then after then, he went to be tested and also to check his doctrine, uh, for about fourteen years. He had to compare his doctrine with those established apostles who had walked with Jesus, because he had not walked with Jesus. He had actually just been, uh, actually had been beat up by Jesus.
Amen.
These other guys walked and had, had, you know, th- you know, three and three years and some change, you were, you know, were selected. Um, but he had an encounter, en- encounter with Jesus. And so, after he had encountered and had seen, you know, Jesus, uh, because, uh, you know, Jesus said, "I'm gonna use you," he had to go and actually compare his doctrine with the other uh, folks who were saying, "I ain't even gonna be around with him. I'm not gonna be around him. I know his reputation."
That's right.
But he had to present himself and actually had to be introduced, um, for the guys to really accept him as a colleague. So, I agree that you, that, uh, we got folks that's breaking in, and I'm bishop this, and apostle this, and I'm that, you know, and stuff. And only give people time enough to in- introduce them as anything. But Paul had, had to wait to be introduced.
Amen.
Uh, you know, and authorized.
Hmm, thank you, Lord.
So, you know, these days when folks are trying to self-authorize and self-proclaim, and don't wanna be under anything, and under no tutelage, and don't wanna be under anybody, um, you know, um, I gave a demonstration one time, oh, and maybe s- some of the members been around a little while, is I had a pitcher of water, and then Jesus, you know, said, "I'm," and he's a living water, right? And I poured that water, I had a glass, a vessel, and as long as that vessel was above the water, it could not be poured into.
Uh-huh.
Right.
Yeah, the water don't flow that way. You have to, that, that, that glass had to be underneath.
Absolutely.
And to be underneath the source to be able to receive it. The other thing, it had to be as empty.
Right.
Right? It had, had to be empty. It couldn't have a top on it. And it couldn't be already filled with some other stuff.
Yeah.
And so, that's a lesson, you know, for us, is that if we're gonna be used mightily, we have to be emptied, and we have to bow. And be prepared to bow, be, be prepared to, to learn, be prepared to, and then understand that we, we don't know enough without the Holy Spirit. W- w- we don't have any power without, uh, the person of the Holy Spirit. We don't have any salvation itself for the death of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
We shouldn't, we're gonna boast about anything. We can't boast about anything itself when we know Jesus. That's it.
Amen, amen. Hmm, yes.
Amen. Okay, um, anybody else wanna add something? Okay. All right, so, um, um, we get the, um, that we can't be pride, we can't be prideful, and we can't have, um, be haltiness. Uh, you know, if we want to, um, receive Christ, or if we want to, you know, be, um, um, amongst, uh, you know, we wanna represent him right. Because of anybody that walked on this earth in the human body that could have been prideful is Jesus. You know, he could have, um, because he, he was, God walked in. Um, and he could, you know, he, all praises, he deserved all the praises. But he came, and he showed humility. He was humble, and he, um, uh, not only that, you know, he left glory to come here. So, that's humility there, and, um, and he showed love. He, um, there are times where he could have, or all the time, that he could have, um, you know, uh, represented himself, you know, in a prideful manner, but he didn't. He did, uh, things humbly. Um, now, he was stern, but he did things, uh, humbly. Okay?
Amen.
That's how we're gonna win people over, um, to Christ.
Absolutely.
We're gonna be humble enough that they realize that we s- see them as another person, and we see them as someone that is loved by God. All right. Uh, verse thirteen says, "To answer before listening, that is folly and shame." Okay? And so, you know, we, you know, the thing about listening is we have to understand, um, you know, who we're listening to, or what we're listening to. We have to understand, um, you know, i- i- it helps us put things in context. So, basically, you know, I, I, it's saying listening, but, you know, I see listening as, um, understanding. Uh, because if I he- I hear you talk, then, um, you know, and I'm not understanding what you're saying, I can't really effectively help you, or I can't really effectively answer, um, a question that you may have until I understand what you're saying. So, we have to, um, you know, i- i- as the saying go, we have two ears and one mouth for reason. And so, we have to, um, um, listen, but the other thing, when we start talking about humility, listening is basically, um, is one way of showing humility. You see? Because when we listen, and so, let, allows, uh, whoever is speaking or is a situation to explain themselves, and we're listening to them so we can understand what's going on, um, it lets them know that we care about them.
Amen.
See, if we, if we speak, um, you know, and, and try to answer before we, um, hear, is, is given the message of, "It don't matter what you say. This is what I got to say." And so, here, you know, um, um, King Solomon is saying, "That is folly and shame." Okay? All right, somebody else wanna add something?
Yes, and we have to know that listening is an art of communication.
Yes.
You know, and a lot of times, people will come to you and, um, you know, and maybe share the things that they are going through in their lives, and then you overtalk them before they even told you what's going on. You know, that's, that's, that is not listening to that individual. You know? People don't care, care how much you know. They care about how much you care for them. So, when you begin to listen to them, you know, and not tell them about your problems, and "Yeah, I went through that and all of that," you know, all of that is unnecessary. Listen to that person. Listen to that person, and when you listen to them, then the Holy Spirit gonna give you what you need to tell them.
Yes.
You know, but a lot of times, we think that we so, you know, "Well, I've been saved for twenty years, so what?" You know?
Right.
And you've been doing the same thing for twenty years. So, we, we have to, like you said just now, we have to be humble and listen to one another. Listen to one another, and don't just answer them with what you think. You know, what you think they should do. It's not about what you think. You give them what God said about them, so they can have a clear understanding, so they can grow more properly in Christ. So, we can't, you know, we can't be talking over people. Talk over people, you got some people, you can't even get a word in edgewise.
I know.
They be telling you everything and not listening to what you say. You know, that's unprofitable to you.
Right.
You know, it's unprofitable, and we don't wanna be unprofital, unprofitable to one another. We wanna listen and pray, you know, and tell that person what thus said the Lord thy God, to lead them in the right way.
Amen. Amen. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Praise God.
Amen.
I'd like to add a, a little adage that has, has helped me a bunch is to seek first to understand, and then to be understood.
Amen.
And, and, um, es- especially leaders in, in the church and that kinda thing. Um, uh, and I've, um, I appreciate, appreciate that evangelist again.
Praise God.
Cause I've seen folks that goes to be ministering to people during tough times or during their sickness, and they say, "Well, you know, I've, um, uh, since my, um, mother's got cancer." And then they say, "Well, my mother had that too, and and my cousin had this right here, and had it in his foot, and then it ran up his leg." And, and I've sit there just holding, trying to hold my peace, and sometimes I'll, I'll interject. Now, that's one time I'll interject. Now, if it's one of, if it's one of my people, they, they, you know, you know, it's one of my elders and stuff, they know better than that, so I don't have to worry about that. But I've been in the room with folk and, um, who are just going off and, 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 you know, saying, uh, what, you know, and, and prophiling, not prophesying, they prophiling.
Amen.
Cause they, they, cause folks don't, sometimes don't know what God is doing, even in an affliction.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have enough information for what God is doing. Um, you know, m- mama might not come out the hospital the way you think, and, and you, you, you know, in, in, if you've seen one case of a thing, that's all you've seen. That's all you know. It's, it's one case of it. That's all you know. So, um, we had to be, you know, be, be careful with that. Then I've taught my, my, you know, my managers, um, when I was an administrator, I said, "P- please don't be caught knowing what you don't know."
That's right.
And, you know, don't, don't ever say, "Oh, yes, I know, I know, I know, and, uh, I know this, and, um, you know, and I believe this and stuff." Just, you, you, it's all right. The word, the words, "I don't know." Are beautiful, beautiful words.
Amen.
Beautiful words. I, "I'm not sure," beautiful words.
Yes.
If, if we can just decide not to know everything and say, um, "Give, give me a moment with the Lord."
Right.
And, and, you know, and, and it's all right not to know. Not sure. Um, and, and, and sometimes it's, it's okay, that, that's a mystery. Nobody knows.
Amen.
That's all right to say. Um, ma- because we, you know, there's some things that we have yet, that have yet to be revealed to us. And, and we have that pride of having, maybe trying to have an answer, uh, for everything. I know we want to. Um, I know sometimes I want to comfort everybody. Uh, but sometimes I don't know the answer.
That's right. Amen.
And I don't know, don't know that answer, um, and I don't need to act like I know that answer.
That's right.
Um, you know, and, and, you know, I don't know the solution sometimes, and sometimes you have to, you get to pause and say, "Dear Lord, you know, h- h- I don't know, but sister or brother, let's, let's pray about it. Maybe God will give us a re- you know, revelation."
Amen.
That's, that's humility.
Mm-huh.
And, and patience.
Spirit, yes.
And it's, and it's honoring, you know, the position of, of God, or, and sometimes, you know, i- i- it's time to, I, I don't know, but how about let's, let's go ask, um, let's go, uh, you know, ask the son school teacher uh, together. You know, um, and, and let's, and let's listen, let's read it again. Let's listen again. Or say that one more time. Say that to me another way.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I didn't quite understand it, or I don't quite understand what you're saying or trying to say. That's okay. Um, rather than, you know, looking at somebody's mouth and waiting for it to stop so you can start. And, you know, and sometimes, you know, we, I've been in, uh, seminars and, uh, you know, pastoral seminar on ours and, and stuff, and the, the, the teacher will say, "Do you have a question on this subject?" And the person will say, "Yes." "Well, in nineteen seventy-five, I was this, and I became bishop, but this right here, and I became..." And I was like, "Now, I know that person said, 'Do you have a question.'" Not, "Do you have a resume?" So, s- s- so every discussion isn't discussion, uh, isn't a, a referendum for us to say who we, what we know, who we know.
That's right.
Have folks to say, you know, "I was in the room with Bishop so-and-so, and I was at the service, you know, and, and I was at the, and I'm like, I, and..."
Yes.
You know, and just, ju- just because you in a garage don't make you a car.
That's right.
And, 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 and so we have to be real cautious. That's that prideful piece again.
That's right. That's what it is. Amen.
That prideful piece and, uh, you know, e- e- even when we're studying together, make sure we've done some study. Don't, you know, do, do some, some study, uh, ask God to give you a revelation. Don't, you know, does did some some study, uh ask God to give you a revelation. Um you know, because we have tender ears.
Amen.
And um we had to be, you know, be careful and not guess and and those kinds of things. Started to show ourselves approve what rightfully. Dividing the word of truth, workmen need not be ashamed.
Amen.
And if you, the the thing is, is that if you deal in in folly, if you deal in saying things that you don't know. Um the the follow up is that it it is folly and ashamed to him.
Amen.
Right?
Amen.
And so as we're trying to be, um you know, especially around spiritual things, you certainly don't wanna tell somebody something. Uh that would lead them into a ditch.
Right.
And that's there's there's a there's an o- an award for that. If we lead somebody wrong trying to know what we don't know, we had to be careful about it.
Amen, amen. Praise God.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. And and you know, um with with that, um you kind of remind me of, you know, usually. When um at work, yeah, um whenever I'm interviewing people. I've got to the point where I would say, you know, at the beginning, that I don't know is a good answer. If you if you don't know, say, I don't know, don't try to make up something or try to.
That's right.
You try to save them from that rope, putting that rope around there on that.
Yes.
Amen. Amen.
They don't know, say, they don't know, good.
That's right. Man, can anybody else wanna add something to that?
Good comments. Um, I was thinking when um everyone was talking, and yes, very good comments, um that. You know, the, and I think you mentioned it about the listening piece. Um, that that really helps in ministry and that's one of the things I am trying to do better with. Is that when I'm talking with someone is to listen more than I offer information. And I try to, you know, purposely um listen and try to make sure that, you know. If an answer or information is required at a certain period, that I provide that. But um that is something that I'm, you know, trying to actually work on as well, because it is easy to do. Um to get in a conversation, it's not so much as being prideful, it's just, you know, you wanted to be helpful, as Pastor said. You wanna, you know, kind of overcompensate, and so, you know, it is important to make sure. That you are listening more than you're seeing, you know, you're talking and um and it's a very important piece. In ministry, in ministering to someone or pouring into someone.
Amen, amen.
Okay, go ahead.
Go go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna add to that, um um uh Sister Sophia was saying. Is that I'd like to add one piece to that, when when folks are coming to you. Is a, you 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 know, um the same God you have is the same God they have. And I'ma tell you why I say that.
Amen.
Uh, sometimes if you listen and ask some questions. Folks already know the answer. Same God talking, you talk to them. And sometimes they don't wanna know, and that's when you you kind of ask, what are they pretending not to know? And then if you give them a chance to continue to talk about it and ask, you know, so how does that sound to you? Right?
That's good.
Yes, yeah, how did how did that sound to you? How how and then sometimes I'll ask, you know, me, I'll say, uh, how's that working for you? How how's that working, you know, and and they know how that's not, that's that that what the current status quo is not working. And and so it's better if folks will take their own advice from God. If you can open up that opportunity and have them to talk it out, God is talking to them too. They they, we we gotta trust that God is talking to folks now. They may not wanna hear it. But but some of that stuff is, you know, you know, y'all know that some of that stuff, we knew as soon as we did it. We had a conviction, we knew it. Ain't nobody had to come preach it to you, you know, you you knew, we knew, we were tossing and turning, cause we knew. And so sometimes you give them the opportunity to just say, you know, just talk it out and then ask and ask, you know, so how does that sound? You know, how how does that sound for you? How does that look for you? How's that working for you? How how does that line up with the word of God that you know? You know, and asking those questions of hold people accountable, you know? And each each one of us are gonna stand at the judgment by our by ourselves. By, won't be no cheats each y'all, last time I check.
That's right.
Right, right. And and so, and that's true, that's what our iron sharpening iron and and pastors and all of our folks are preparing folks. Um for that time, also, you know, preparing them to do the work, doing preparing each other to do the work. Um because you're not gonna be able to run to your Bible and run to your pastor and run to your 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 son's school teacher all the time. There's some things that you you're gonna have to have a relationship with the spirit.
Absolutely.
And and know that that's wrong for real and know that it's right for real and be able to stand on it. And that that comes from us being able to say, now, look, I I'm not, you know, there's a time. When you got to start chewing food for yourself.
That's right.
Right?
Amen.
Okay, then you're gonna you're gonna start chewing food now, you keep coming asking me that same question, I'm listening. But I I can, I'm quick to ask you, did we talk about this last week? Did we, we go over this in Bible study or did did I preach about this right here? And now, are you, you know, is it time for you to apply some things that you've already heard? Those are those questions that develop Christians.
Amen.
And and we don't have to chew it up for them, or you know, for you all the time.
Amen. Okay, okay, thank you, tha- tha- thank you for um stealing what I was gonna say. No, I. I think it's gonna come from my angle of, you know, how many times that when when we were thinking about something? And then when we start talking to somebody about it, and then it kind of hits us. You know, the answer or, you know, what we're seeking. Uh so in this case, you know, sometimes it's best to let people talk, as you guys, you were saying Pastor, let people talk because. Um they they realize, but see, sometimes we interrupt. We we speak sometimes too soon that they don't get their revelation, you know? And so, so we have to be careful about that and 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 on this verse, I'mma read this what's um. The the message say, cause it 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 come kind of strong, I think, it says, answering before listening is both stupid and rude.
And fish.
Okay, uh anybody else wanna add something on that?
I I like to say it.
Yes.
Oh, I'm just know what y'all saying, that's what I was trying to say. And and that thing about sometime, you know, like say, when you're in a conversation with somebody and you be talking about. Our word and talking about God, and like you said, when if when if you're doing anything. And like I say, we got to know right from wrong and we be convicted our own self. When we listen to a conversation or listen, or either we be talking in a conversation, I have found myself sometimes. Talking with people about God and telling them about God and then I find myself looking back at myself. And looking at, and it be always, they say, it going back to you and makes you re- realize and look. See where your downfall at and where you shall be at to re- repent from that and turn yourself around. But turning around more was driveway, because he's showing you the way. To come to reality, to turn from your ways and receive and go back to him. And that's why sometimes we 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 listen with ears, open ears, and we listen at people talk. But meantime, when they're talking, in the meantime, while you talking, you're giving them some uh counsel word, but then the counsel word is coming back to you. Because it's coming back to you to make you see, and so I find I find myself sometimes talking and I say, ooh, you know, I didn't realize this, but you know. He showed me more, better myself too, and to help me to be, and that's why I say. You could tell, prepare your own self because you'll be cut, that's why the Holy Spirit gonna cut you. To make you see where you at in a conversation that you're having, so it's good to listen and it's good to be able to receive. The word in the Holy Spirit so that you can open and change and change more for God.
I I would like to add one more thing before we get off of this too. Is that that when we listen, when we do get to listen to folk, I appreciate that. But one of the things that I've learned, and I don't know if anybody else has learned this right here, and they may observe, may. That sometimes of folks are not, you know, when they're talking anyway. You 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 might be, if you listen, you listen for what they really need.
Yes.
So sometimes folks might just need to say something to get it off their chest, not to get a response.
Right.
So the spirit can discern the spirit. Folks might be saying one thing with their mouth, but their spirit is saying something else, and if we're not patient enough, we will miss it. And so that would kind of make us stupid, we missed the whole thing. Or somebody is saying one thing, they they may be reaching out for another thing.
That's right.
Yeah, instead of information, they might need fellowship.
Right.
That is so true Pastor, and it just made me think about, you know, a lot of times we are say, um. You know, I want God to give me, uh show me uh situations and um present to me opportunities where I can minister. And then when we get that opportunity, we do not, um, well, I'll just say me. Um I don't uh allow the Holy Spirit to do what it needs to do and allow God to move the way he needs to move. And so that's really good, you know, um what you were saying, that that, you know, really allows God to work. And do what needs to be done, instead of us taking taking over, but just being used by God to do what needs to be done.
Amen. And we don't really need to go ahead of the Holy Spirit. Sometime we go ahead of the Holy Spirit and the Holy Spirit don't wanna go that way, but. You know, we're we we go ahead of him, we don't li- listen to what the Holy Spirit is saying. And you know, we have to really be attentive to what the Holy Spirit is saying, because the Holy Spirit knows all things. It knows all things, so we have to be really um submissive. To the Holy Spirit, so the Holy Spirit can use us and not just take off and just say what you wanna say and. It sound like it's holy, but it's not, cause it's not according to scripture, and we have to be biblically sound, you know?
Amen.
Knowing what the word of God is saying, I can't give nobody my my opinion, my opinion don't mean nothing.
That's right.
You know, if you my sister and I love you, you know, and I might can't give you an answer right then because. Uh the Holy Spirit have not given me anything to give you. So we must be led by the Spirit, those that are led by the Spirit are the sons of God, we are the sons of God, so we. Must be led by the Holy Spirit, cause the Holy Spirit knows all things. And we can't go before the Holy Spirit, you know, let the Holy Spirit use us. He's he's our, he's he's the one that govern us, we got to let the Holy Spirit use us, you know, and then. We let the Holy Spirit use us, then we we can live a better life for Christ Jesus.
Yes. Uh you know, um. Kind of touching in on what um Pastor was saying about, you know, the impatient, sometimes it need be, you know, they just need fellowship. You know, one of the things, you know, we look at Job, when Job and friends came and sat with him.
Yes.
Sat for seven days, they sat in silence for seven days and seven nights with Job. See, sometimes, you know, it's it's that, you know, what we're showing is, we're showing patience and we're showing love. I'm here with you, you know?
Man.
Cause sometimes, you know, when people going through, they might not wanna hear anything, you know?
Right.
So when we sit in silence, one thing we do is, you know, as Pastor was saying, you know, we serving the same God. It gives him time to minister to us, not only to us, but minister to them, because, you know, at that moment, they might not be, um. You know, you might, there might be a word for them, but they might not be in a receiving spirit.
Right, absolutely.
And see, but just that calmness, if you will.
Yeah, so.
You know, and then then uh uh he gives a chance, because when you sit in silence together, you're fellowshipping. Because what what's happening is, you get to um, you get to um 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 pick up on their spirit. You get to see some things so that you can understand, even if they're saying, yeah, I'm okay, I'm fine. But see, you can really see past that, you know, the Holy Spirit helps you see past that and and and, you know, and. Then we can actually move in the way God wants to move.
Amen.
And it gets us out of our our, gets us out of our opinion. And then it also lets us, you know, it 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 demonstrate love, you know?
Amen.
Patient with you, I whatever I had on the agenda, you know, just clear it, I'm just gonna sit here with you.
Amen.
Okay, amen, the comments, alright. Um anybody who wanna add something, First Lady, you have something you wanna?
Um I was just thinking, you know, we'll be quick to say, use me, Lord, in this situation. And then we'll be quick to take over, so. This is good for me, I'm I'm really enjoying the the insight and just the revelations of how to approach this and listen more. Um and just, you know, and just allow God to move.
Oh, yeah, yes.
You know, with that, um so if we back up to the prior scripture. See, that that goes into prior scripture, because, you know, like, um and and I think, you know, Pastor was mentioning earlier about. You know, so where we have to be is, um so if someone come to us. And and you know, we take it that they come seeking advice, uh we feel that they look up to us and we gotta have something for them.
Right, amen.
But sometimes, you know, sometimes I don't know is good answer.
Yes.
You know, uh because, um you know, be be because. First of all, you you know, we don't wanna mislead people. And uh you know, because then what's happening is we getting prideful of, you know, well, I gotta have something, they gonna come to me, I gotta have something. And then we get prideful.
Right.
But see, we have to, it have to be, I don't know, let's let's, you know, let's 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 talk to the pastor about this, let's talk, you know, to the evangelists about this. Um or let's 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 come together and pray over this.
Right, amen.
And 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 what happens is, because we really need to um. Help people understand that we're in the same boat.
Right.
You know? Even if it's something that I been through, and you know, we're we're quick and easy to say, I know how you feel.
Amen.
And that is one thing I try my best not to say, you know? Because I I really don't, because people handle things differently.
Differently, yeah.
Yes.
And see, and 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 and, you know, I try to keep it to, I understand. Simply because, um you know, I telling people, I know how you feel when we really don't. Uh we we think that we can minister to them, but you know, we might make the situation worse.
Amen.
And so we have to humble ourselves in these situations, and once we humble ourselves. And not get so prideful of saying, I gotta have an answer. And once we humble ourselves and not get so prideful of saying, I gotta have an answer, then, you know, it goes further. Then we trying to be prideful and have an answer. And then that way, they realize, okay, we're all in this together. That that, you know, that that I'm not better than you.
Right.
We're we're in this together.
Amen.
And we have to seek God together. Okay.
Amen.
And I agree with you, um, Chris, and I, um, I know my, what I had realized that I do sometime, but I have to apologize, because I have to say, really, I don't even understand. Because as you say, with the other terms you use, what your experience has been, what you've gone through, still doesn't mean the same for the person that you're talking to.
That's right. That's right.
So, you know, it, and you're right, you have to be careful for what you say to a person. Um, and that wisdom and knowledge or experience is to, you got to keep learning and how to handle within different situations.
Yes.
Absolutely. Amen.
Okay. Fourteen, the human spirit can endure in sickness, but a crushed spirit, who can bear? Okay, um, Scott?
Oh, well, no, I was listening in on what what you're saying about somebody saying, I don't know. And to me, uh, that's good character. When you honestly say, I don't know, to an answer, it says something to the person asking the question. And it slows their thinking down, slows the process down, and together you can seek, you know, the solution together. And sometimes when you have two people seeking a solution together, it, uh, expands into something bigger than just having a quick answer when you haven't really researched the information. So I I I really appreciate what what, uh, Pastor Andy said and what you said in regards to that, uh, I don't know, because, um, and we're never too old to to say that. We're never too old to say that, and we're never too young to say.
Okay.
I just had to say that, and I hope everybody's safe and out of the storm now.
All right, all right, thank you, thank you. Okay, all right. So anybody want to, um, start a discussion on verse fourteen? Talking about the human spirit can endure sickness. Okay.
Could I say, yeah, um, when the the this is a very important verse in a lot of different ways. In 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 one way, when the Bible asks us to to guard our heart.
Yes.
Right?
That's right.
The way we guard our, we guard our heart and make sure that we don't get into a position where we have a crushed spirit. It, you can come back from a broken leg and almost a broken backbone. But it is ru- ru- tough for people to come back from a bro- broken spirit.
Amen.
And and, um, and, you know, um, it manifests itself in a lot of different ways. And we have to be, you know, su- super sensitive and super encouraging to, um, because it's, um, the, you know, the devil wants people on their back.
That's right.
And that's where we have to learn about, um, how, uh, to encourage, you know, to encourage one another.
That's right.
Yes.
Uh, not only in words, but also in deeds.
Absolutely.
Uh, to support people, again, also the listening piece also is a part of it.
That's right.
Is, um, is to 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 understand that, you know, that, you know, everybody's having, going through something, everybody. Everybody, if you're living on this right here earth, because we're foreigners in this world, we're going through something.
Absolutely.
And some of it, some of us are looking better handling it than others, but it doesn't mean we any bigger than the others.
That's right.
Man, sometimes we put on a little better than the next one. Um, how however, the sensitive sensitivities, understanding, there are a lot of people who have had, you know, who are experiencing traumas of various kinds.
No, yes.
And, um, that we have to navigate those things, understanding and acknowledging. Uh, and also being in a position to to help to try to be a bridge. Um, a bridge out of the valley. But there, you know, a lot of folks, um, and folks told a lie somewhere down the line when they said, sticks and stones will break my bones, but words will never hurt. Yeah, uh, you know, words and situations and life happiness can crush, you know, can crush spirits.
Amen.
And that's why we have to call on the Holy Spirit to lift us through this. And also, we have to speak life into ourselves.
Right.
Um, was it David? Who 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 said he had to, he had to speak to himself? Right, right? Anybody remember?
Yes, amen.
Right, he had to, I I need to encourage myself. And then to way, the way he thought he would make it sustainable, he said, um, Lord, you need to create in me a clean heart. Because if you operate, you give me a heart operation, because that's where the soul resides.
Yes.
Uh, then I can get back on on praising you like I need to praise you. But he, you know, he he had had a crushed spirit because of his relationship, that kind of stuff. So we were running into the times, and it's absolute, you know, Satan, again, we we fighting not against flesh and blood.
Amen.
Yes. Okay, so that the the Satan wants to crush our spirit.
Yes, he does.
And he he wants to crush the spirit of the elect. Uh, so that we wouldn't, we will not have a voice to praise God.
Amen. Amen.
Um, thank you for that. Scott, you get your hand up?
Actually, I forgot to put my hand down. Sorry. Sorry, I'll put my hand down, sorry.
Okay, all right. Anyone else want to add something to that, to that? Okay. All right, um. All right, so so, you know, to to add on to to that, um, you know, we have to be careful, you know, that we don't cause that crushed spirit in someone. And when we look at the preceding verses, you know, if we get caught up in that, you know, we answering before listening, or we even being prideful, or, um, looking at others, you know, with hulty eyes, then we can put them in a situation of having a broken spirit. And whenever we do that, you know, uh, I believe that God is going to hold us accountable for it. Because, you know, that's that's, you know, as bad as misleading. And and so we have to be very careful, um, in how we do and how we treat people. All right? And, um, and, you know, the Scripture is telling us. And, you know, if we look at that in the, um, message, it says, a healthy spirit conquers adversity. But what can you do when the spirit is crushed? That's like taking, you know, you 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 would say that's like taking the life out of a situation. You're excited and you're happy about, um, you know, about things. And then all of a sudden, uh, someone come along and, um, you know, bring a dark cloud on it, or, you know, something negative. Uh, you know, if we look at it from that perspective, you know, you happy about a situation, or you happy? Um, and then somebody come along, well, you do know such as such as it. That kills your spirit. I think earlier when, um, Pastor was using the example of, you know, like, um, cancer. And you come along, well, you know, my aunt had this. See, someone might be, you know, they got their spirit built up and trusting God in the situation. And, you know, and and what they need is more seed, positive seed. And then we come and bring native seed, and what that does, that crushes their spirit. And now they, now you put them back in a situation where they're being concerned, uh, you know? And so we have to remember, especially as Christians, that we got to be lifting up people. Lifting up, you know, them spiritually, you know, as as, you know, as well as, you know, we have to emotionally, we have to lift people up, okay?
Amen.
All right, so, um, let's do fifteen, and we'll stop on fifteen. It says, the heart of the discerning acquires knowledge, for the ears of the wise seek it out. Okay? The heart of the discerning acquires knowledge, because you're seeking knowledge. You want to know, you know, you you you, um, um, as Paul would say, oh, know him in his glory. So, you know, I I want to know more about him. I want to know, and and and, you know, this is the saying in in everything. If you want to know your history, and you're going to, you, you know, and 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 you have a heart of discerning, and you want to know your history, you you're going to continue to seek it as you, you know, you learn. And the same thing with God. If we want to know him better, we're going to continue to seek him. We, you know, and 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 in this point here, it says, for the ears of the wise, seek it out. So, you know, and 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 to know God is, you know, we got to know His word, got to study His word. And once we learn His His written word, then we can, you know, we can understand and hear His rainbow word. And, um, and and, you know, as we gain more knowledge, we should gain more wisdom. You know, understanding, um, how to treat people. Um, you know, and 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 so when we look at that, and we, um, these verses that are before this one, you know, they fall in their line, you know, because first of all, we have to, um, 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 you know, got to get rid of the pride and haltiness, because if we got pride and haltiness, guess what? I already know it all. I I I, you can't teach me that. There ain't nothing else for me to learn. I already know it. That's pride. You know, and and then, you know, when when I feel that I already knew it and I got it all, then you start talking about something. I I take it from you and take it on, right? Because that's pride. And so then, you know, um, in doing that, you know, we we're gonna, we're gonna hurt people, you know, their spirit. And so what, um, Proverbs is teaching us, the heart of discerning acquire knowledge. How do we require acquire knowledge? Is we got to be willing to receive. To acquire means something going in, right?
Right.
There's something going in, you know, seeking, there's something coming in, okay? Now, if I'm listening, something is coming in. But if I'm talking, something is going out. So when we see this, and we is talking about knowledge, it's talking about wisdom, we know, we got to understand. We got to receive something in in those situation. Now, if, you know, you know, if we're empty, we can't pour out nothing, and we get caught up in our opinions. You see? So that's why we have to seek, and we have to listen, so God can pour into us. Is right, He will let us know when to pour out. God?
Yeah, the Bible says, seek and you will find, knock, knock, it shall be opened. And, uh, I mean, what do people, they pay lots of money to sit before a professor and listen. And the ones that listen, they gain. And the ones that, you know, want to goof off with their friends, well, that's their reward, you know? They they got a good laugh, but they never, they didn't learn. So what it ties down to is passion. If you have a passion for something, uh, you will seek it, and you will have an understanding, because that's your passion. That's something that God put in you in your book, you know, for you to, uh, work on. And because of that, and you have a passion, it lights your heart up. And you're around other people that are the same, their hearts are lit up the same. So when you, you're discerning with your heart, you're listening to, um, the people before you that have gone through different, uh, struggles of doing the same thing, and and when somebody fresh comes in, it it, uh, they get their perspective on the other side of the the world, bringing it over here. And you know what? That that's the beauty of the United States. The beauty of the United States is that you have cultures of all walks of life contributing for the greater good. And they're, and and you know what? Their heart is open because they have the freedom to say and to express their vision and their ideas to one another. And, uh, most, uh, most big corporations start in a garage. Starts with a drawing on a napkin. And then it lights up on somebody, and somebody else gets lit up on it, and then they just share ideas. And these days, they have, uh, you know, the internet and the phones and the, you know, it expands. Um, and then God gets the glory out of it. So in that regard, I I find it refreshing to keep our ears open. And, uh, but I've been the kind to also, you know, speak ahead. But I'm learning more to listen more than speak, and you're never too old to to do that.
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
That's it.
All right, anyone else want to share anything? You know, we we we, um, study these lessons and, you know, our, um, Bible study. You know, all of the comments, you know, that everyone bring is is appreciated. Um, you know, um, because, um, that's how we we grow, we grow together. Is that, you know, we sharing what, um, you know, the Holy Spirit has given to us to share in 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 this situation. You know, because the, um, we none know it all, and these these scriptures, you know, is is, you know, they they are full. They're full. And even with the big discussions that we had tonight, um, on these verses, it may sound like we were beating it to death, but, um, there's still a lot more there.
Oh, yes.
So what happens is, when each person shares from their perspective, from their experiences, um, you know, their their experiences with God, uh, um, and they share, and it gives us a full view of, not only of what the Word is saying, but of who and, uh, what, you know, of who God is and what God can do. And in sharing that, especially in sharing testimonies, um, it strengthens somebody. You know, we, we don't know, there may be somebody online, or somebody on YouTube, or maybe a later date viewed on YouTube. And the thing that you said probably be the thing that led them to to God, or even, um, saved their lives. And so we thank everybody for the comments. Um, and, um, you know, we 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 pray that, you know, even more will, um, um, wanna have something to say, you know, um, you know, we will make room for you. And um, you know, we thank everybody for coming along and everybody that's on YouTube for listening. We thank you. And you know, we uh, want you to continue to uh, join in with us. And um, you, those on YouTube, um, you know, maybe one day you are, you'll be able to dial in. Sure, you know, some may be working and, but you know, one day we pray that you be able to dial in and, and share your insights as well. So, um, we're gonna bring our lesson to close on tonight. And um, Pastor, we're gonna turn it over to you.
Alright, um, Brother Chris, we really appreciate that. Appreciate all the teachers on here. All the comments have been, have been wonderful and enlightening. Um, and and while just like to add one more thing is that we talked about it. Just um, just going through these few um, verses. It shows that there's so much in there. Sometimes I get frustrated so much of what I don't know yet. Um, what I really don't know, um, when we, when I open the, this, you know, the Bible and some of these books and or listen to the videos and those kinds of things, I, I get a little upset at myself sometimes about what I don't know. Um, but I try to stay thirsty.
Amen.
So, pray, pray my strength in the Lord.
Amen.
Um, given that we've come together and over this word now, let's come together with prayer and touch and agree. And support one another in our prayer requests. Are those who would have prayer requests tonight?
People in the storm, especially the ones that have no homes. That's uh, it's uh, rough and tumble out there. We just got, just got back.
Amen.
I'd like to put a little young man that was supposed to attend our um, STEM camp. And we just found out he had to have brain surgery, so I wanna keep him in prayer.
Amen.
Amen.
Also, um, a young man that um, um, yesterday got hit by a vehicle, we'll put him in prayer.
Where did that happen, Chris?
Um, I think somewhere in Aner, maybe.
Okay.
Let's put that family in prayer that they sixteen year old son got killed on the Friday.
Well, elder, where was, where, where was that?
It, it was in um, where was it at? I think it was in France, they said. I'm not sure, I just got a piece of it, pastor. Say sixteen years old and he was locked in and somebody shot him in the chest twice. And his family is tore up from the floor.
I'm sure, I'm sure. We've got to just keep doing the work of an evangelist. That's the only prevention to that, to get him in Sunday school. Get him back in church some kind of way.
Amen.
Yep.
Certainly put those, those parents and family in the community in prayer.
That's right.
Hurts everybody. Hurt me, I don't even know.
Me too.
Someone else?
I would like to have a prayer for Miss Marcy and her children, her family. My neighbor Michelle, it worked for healing for her.
And also Gerard in prayer, but I also wanna do a prayers before because, you know, Gerard can't do what we needed him to do, but we had someone else step in and say, well, I'll do the transportation. And the days that they gave was the days that we needed Gerard. So, you know, God is continually working with us.
Amen.
Well, I'd like, uh, I'd like to request prayer for um, everybody, really. I'd like to request prayer for healing for all those that battling with cancer. Also like to uh, put all those in leadership in the prayer circle. Or put them in the prayer circle that God will open them, o- open them more to his word, but more so keep them active down in his word that they would be able to stand up for the And then also let's put the president into the prayer circle. That God guide him and lead him in the right path. And I also like to uh, put uh, 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 praise in. I had a friend that husband had cancer. And she called me, um, uh, she says that he was taking chemo, but they, the chemo was taking a lot out of him and it was curbing down, so he decided he didn't, he won't go take no more chemo no more, so he could just, he didn't wanna take the chemo no more, so they just said, but they've been testing. And she said, you know what? She says, I, she said, I'm speaking healing over his body. She said, he gonna still be here with me a little while long. She said, but God gonna heal. So, she called me the other night and she, she said, I got good news. And they couldn't find no cancer.
Hallelujah.
Thank you, Jesus.
But she still, I said, you know, you know what? He say, I, he, he say, like he got more energy. Now she said, but keep moving, pray. I said, you know what? Who won't have no energy when they have good news like that? I said, well, the thing about not letting him know that he did the healing over his body. And now he know that nobody do what God. And I said, we just, all the thing we could do is just thank God for what he doing and how he doing and just let your people go. I said, but she said, I thank God. And then she was saying, uh, 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 she still keep reviewing. She said, but then now she the counselor too. So, and she said, she go find her and then she got diabetes, she's a diabetic. And she goes over there sometime and she said she be out, the sugar be dropping stuff. And she said, she stayed alone. She said, y'all keep her up there. So, I'll put, put her in the prayer circle and that. So, I, I don't really know name. Yeah, but she just said, everybody pray for her, her husband. But I did been throwing their name out, but I told her, God is real and I thank God for what he doing to show him. I'm, I told him, right now, check that he get back on the truck, go deliver stuff now.
Amen. God doesn't have to be great, uh, you know, um, he doesn't have to be, uh, do miracles to be great, but he's still doing. He, he's already great.
Yes, he is.
And he's still doing miracles. He's still working wonders, absolutely.
Um, I wanna um, put my sister Sharon, um, Sister Vicky, her daughter Tora. And Miss Lucy Brown.
Amen. Someone else?
Praying for Miss Judy, Oy, for, for healing. Um, and praying for my friend Nicole for healing. And um, my niece Kelsey has sprained foot the other day. I'm praying for her. And um, um, praying for my, my, my beautician that she's gone down and back to today. Um, so praying for her and healing. And um, praying for the body of Christ.
Amen.
And, and the church for the leaders, uh, for the pastors. Elders in our church and um, our altar, the universal body of Christ. And uh, to rise up in, in uh, evangelism that they always go for. Bring people to Christ and get out there and love peo- love people.
To, someone else?
Um, I would like to request prayer for a good friend, I'm sorry, good friend of ours, um, friends of ours, Tony and Selena round, their family for um, continued strength. Um, also for co- coworker for strength, um, for Miss Sue and uh, Sister Wendy for continued healing. Um, for um, for our children, also for, you know, for direction, healing and for strength. And also for pa- all of our pastors, Pastor um, Andy, Pastor Odell and Sister Wilda and Pastor Vanessa for um, continued strength, for direction. And um, for, you know, continued um, guidance as they lead the body of Christ.
Thank you.
I also wanna ask for your prayers as we um, travel tomorrow, um, for the services for Vincy's aunt.
I also like to put Ricky in the prayer circle, uh, for the loss and his family too. And also like to uh, into the prayer circle. And I also like to put a lady named Miss Trent. She stay in Col- in Charleston. And she had new surgery on Monday. But then she passes back and said that after the surgeries, that's another prayer, that she, they had, she got up and were walking on. So, she, she put herself there and told us to keep praying, everybody keep lift her up in prayer cause she had to go in. So, we told, we started that night before she go in that morning and up in the day, but anyway, that she passed back, they passed back and said she was doing, she went through surgery good. And everything right that good and they had it and she was up walking on a, on knee, or walking on the lady that after, up in the day. So, we just prayed that God would still restore and recover her. That, you know, she just, she just, just, just be totally healed. And we, we thank God for how he just working with her and everybody else that's searching this afternoon.
I also wanna add, um, Brother Glenn to prayer, um, for uh, strength and comfort. Um, for his, the pastor, I think it's a close friend that he lost.
Asking for continuous prayer and covering for my grandchildren. Um, I'm praying for a miracle, cause the doctor told me today it's gonna take a miracle. But I know who the great physician is, so just keep us lifted up in prayer.
Amen.
In the name of Jesus.
Oh Lord, thank you, Lord Jesus.
Amen. Let us, let us pause and pray. Heavenly Father, dear God, this is not our first time coming to you, dear God, and any of us talk to you all day long. I started early this morning, some late last night, on our knees, uh, calling on the name of Jesus. Father, we wouldn't uh, call on you, except for you ask us, till you told us, uh, as um, one of the brothers said earlier, ask and seek and knock. Dear Lord, we're asking, we're seeking and we're knocking. Dear God, you would hear those things. Dear Lord, we only gave you a portion of the many things, the minute trials that people are going through. Um, and the challenges with family, the loss of loved ones, the, um, challenges of sickness. This, this thing we call cancer, uh, all these things, dear Lord, families are dealing with. For themselves or with their children, uh, with their parents, dear God, uh, dear Lord. And we've placed those petitions out in front of you. And there's not one of those things, dear Lord, that you're not able to fix. And we say, thank you, God. Dear Lord, we just, and we yield to you, God. We yield to your will and to your way. But dear Lord, you said you give us the desires of our hearts, but we're placing our desires out before you. Um, dear Lord, we are respecting your will at the same time, have that type of skill of maturity, spiritual maturity. But here are your children, we're crying, dear God, in this wilderness. This is indeed a wilderness. And the reason why we're having all of these infirmities and all those things, cause this is not our home. Uh, we are foreigners going through a, a foreign land. And we're working toward, dear God, glory. We're looking toward a new Jerusalem. We're looking to the Lord for glorified bodies that don't have these ailments.
In the name of Jesus.
But until then, dear Lord, we ask for your naughtiness. We ask, dear Lord, for your mercy. We ask for intervention, dear God, spiritual intervention.
In the name of Jesus.
Ask for uh, angels uh, to, to come and minister in the ways that you would have them to minister. We also ask you, dear Lord, to use us. If you, you need us, dear God, ask us to, to teach us to say the right things, to be in the right way.
In the name of Jesus.
Dear Lord, just to show up and be quiet. Uh, teach us that also, Father.
Thank you.
That we could sit with people, dear God, in their challenges, dear Lord. And then also give them the testimony, dear Lord, that you're good all by yourself.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, dear Lord, that we, that give us a, a boost of our faith, dear Lord, so that we walk uh, that we would not act like unbelievers, but to walk in confidence, dear Lord. That we have a relationship with you. And so, dear God, we say, thank you, dear God. Things that you're doing right now. Thank you, dear Lord, for the strength that you've given us right now. Thank you for the
Thank you.
Your strength for us right now. Thank you for the fellowship that we're actually enjoying right now. We thank you, dear God, for the strength and people and, and the revelation that people are getting right now. Thank you for the endurance that you're building.
Thank you, God.
We thank you, dear God, for the insight you've given us in these situations. We thank you for the lessons that we're learning, right? And dear Lord, we just thank you, dear Lord, that iron is strong and iron tonight. Dear Lord, that you've given us power. Uh, thank you, dear Lord, for giving us peace in the middle of Thank you, Lord. Peace beyond understanding. Dear Lord, we just say thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
Now, Father, now that you're doing these things, and now, dear Lord, that you're working with us, and now that you've kept us and that you feed us and you clothe us and you shelter us, dear Lord.
Hallelujah.
Give you a hallelujah, dear God. An expectation, Father, of however it manifests. Expecting your will and your way, dear Lord, that you will never make a mistake. That you'll never leave us not for sinners. We just thank you for the confidence in knowing that all these things are in your hands. We are in your hands and we can not be plugged out. Dear Lord, if you keep us and you will, we'll be you bless us and we have already been blessed, dear God, and you be blessed. If you anoint us, dear God, we'll have an anointing that Satan can't even touch. You deliver, dear Lord, we'll definitely be delivered. Of the Father and of the Son.
Hallelujah.
Holy Ghost, we say amen, amen, and amen.
Hallelujah.
Amen, everybody.
Thank everybody for being on. Thank you guys for your prayers and thank you for your participation.
In the name of Jesus. Good night, everyone.
Love you guys.
Well, you too, Pastor.
That's not like my friend, baby. Good night, night. That's a family expression of our night.